concludes my report.
Hey Paul, it's Don. I have a question. In the right-hand physical year-to-date column, the negative 13,873, is that the beginning balance?
That is correct.
That we started the year at a negative balance? I didn't think we could.
Yes, you can. In a revolving account, you can, because the auditor will come in because that 13,873, we had not received our June reimbursement, very similar to the January claim. In other words, that figure 13,873,82, that was July 1st.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I can show you on the reports that we had not received, we actually get June's in July. They're actually a year, not a year, a month behind.
Right, they're running one month in arrears. I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Nicole.
So is this chart yours or Gus's?
I did this chart and Gus filled in the figures. I went over it with him. I had to sit down with him and so forth.
Okay, so great. I just didn't want to ask questions that you couldn't answer. Jeff, can you like-
I could make a comment.
Can you just scroll down just a little bit so I can see that bottom again? Jeff? Oh, perfect. So I'm looking at where it says current free students. So our total enrollment, we have 1,591 students. That's just at that snapshot, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then of those students, how many, is the percent participation on the right there? That's how many get lunches? What is that?
On the percentages? That is correct.
Yeah, where it says meals served and then the box under it says percent participation.
Those are the free lunches.
Okay. So I can't, I just can't replicate that percentage. I think that 538 and 139 gives you the total of 42.5%, but it doesn't make sense that 538 could then be 41% free. So there's just something a little wacky with those numbers.
I will get back to you at the next meeting on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether the numbers that are shown there on the left are necessarily tied to what's in the boxes. I took that percent participation to be actually of kids who could participate. How many are participating out of the total population? I didn't know that the percent participation was free.
That's what I was wondering. So is that, is that how many kids we serve breakfast and lunch to overall? You know, or, I don't know. I just didn't understand what that number is.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Yeah, let me, Gus did that piece, because he has those figures.
And the meals, the meals served is to date, right?
Yes.
And then the school lunch debt, just remind me, so we use those school bucks accounts. Does that, people who have school bucks don't count in that debt column. These are just, in other words, how's that debt?
I'm sorry?
There could be school bucks people in there. It's people that students have not paid for their meals.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we come, like, so that total doesn't move. Like, I got a call a week or two ago that my son's lunch account was in arrears, you know. I had shut the alerts off on my phone, so I didn't know. So it was like we were $20 in debt. So is that $20 included in this snapshot where then, you know, I put money in the account and then it goes away?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So this, this number is just also a snapshot just based on any, any debt at that point. But some of it can get resolved and then some of it continues to build.
That is correct. And that ends up at the end of the year. We have a figure there that we, you know, that's going to fluctuate.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I've muted myself again.
What? Oh, oh, there it is.
Anyone?
No, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone? Anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Funk.
Going twice.
Thanks, George. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're most welcome. Thanks for the hard work, Mr. Funk, and thanks, everybody, for the good feedback. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, number seven, which is subcommittee reports. And the only one that I know of right now is the superintendent evaluation report. We tested out our first virtual meetings, meeting Chris, the superintendent I met for the superintendent evaluation. And I will turn it over to the superintendent for any information she wants to put on. And Chris, if he has anything to add as well.
Okay, so we went over my progress so far to date on my goals. And we also reviewed the fact that each of my goals is assigned to one of the rubric indicators. And this year with the sort of proposed new system for evaluating superintendents, the superintendent and the school committee identify six to eight indicators that align to goals, at least one indicator per standard. So we have seven in my set of goals. And so evidence of goal progress simultaneously serves as evidence of practice. And the school committee will evaluate evidence of performance on these indicators only. So at the April meeting, I will be presenting my progress on my goals. And what we talked about at the meeting in terms of process for the committee to complete their individual evaluations of me and then the combined evaluation, was rather than each individual member completing a teach point form, we're going to have a Google form created that probably Gail will own, Gail and Suzie. Each member will complete the evaluation through that form and you'll be able to see all of the different standards and all of that. And from that Google form, a spreadsheet is automatically created. And then that spreadsheet will be shared with the chair, who will then create one teach point combined document for representing all five of your input. And we did talk about a timeline. And so I will be presenting to the full committee on April 8th. And then you will receive the link to the Google form shortly thereafter. And I think we said by May 1st, if all five members could have their Google sheet completed. And then the spreadsheet will be shared with the chair. And then the superintendent evaluation subcommittee will meet again. We set up May 11th so that the combined evaluation can be previewed with me. And then on the 13th is when it is scheduled for the public evaluation of the superintendent. How does that sound to everyone?
Okay, by me, thank you. Whoops, sorry.
Nope, sorry. Go ahead, everyone.
Okay, by me, thank you.
Nicole, you had something?
I was just saying, sounds good.
Don, any comment?
Nope, that sounds good.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
And I do not have anything to add. You pretty much covered it.
Thanks, Chris. All right, if nothing else, I'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Superintendent DeBoer. Item eight here, we have specifically assigned an unfinished business, which is our 1920 school committee goal assignments. So I will share that document with everyone, if I can see it. So basically, the intention here was to go through, and let me know if you can see it, and assign individuals, individuals or groups that are responsible for each one of these action steps so that we can continue carrying out and match our progress as well as provide an end-of-year update for when we move on to our next strategic plan. Any issues with that from anyone? So the first item on is develop and implement a review process for spending of school choice funds. Can everybody see the shared document?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
This, you know, the way I look at this, this could be both a policy and a financial working group thing. So I take any kind of recommendations. It's not necessarily a policy, it's more of a protocol. My recommendation was to have that completed by the financial working group, which would have been currently Don and George. But if we put the financial working group there as responsibility, we won't have to change names in May if that happens.
Sounds good.
Okay, so 1A is the financial working group. Any other issues with that or any other recommendations?
I have the document opened in Google, so I'm adding in whatever you are telling me.
Oh, thank you. I was writing it down too. That's better.
Okay, financial working group is responsible for 1A.
1B, each committee member will visit grant-funded innovation classrooms, classes in advanced manufacturing. That's all. That's not an individual item, as far as I understand. Any issues with that?
Nope.
Nope.
Two committee members participate in development. We already have those designated. That was Don and, I apologize, was it Don and George or was it Don and Nicole? I forgot who the two were. But Don and Nicole are already doing 1C? 1D, ensure that students from each school have the opportunity to present at the monthly school committee meetings. I think you can make that responsibility of the chair, whoever that may be.
I agree.
Agreed.
For goal two, collaborate with Mashpee-Wampum on tribal council, develop a shared agenda for the annual joint meeting. I had been working on that as well, but we do have tribal liaison. Do we want to keep that at the chair level or do we want to move that to the tribal liaison or have both of those individuals take care of it?
I think it makes sense to just do both. I mean, you know, I saw that you had sent something to Winnie, right?
I talked to Winnie. I also talked to David.
Yeah, I mean, so I wasn't aware of that. So it would just be nice to know if you're having conversations.
Well, I spoke with him at the civics, at the civics thing. I was partnered with him during the civics presentation. So I spoke with him about some of their, I have not officially or formally reached out to the tribal council itself, although that was his recommendation.
Oh, what was, I thought I saw an email that you sent.
No, I haven't, I haven't formally reached out to anybody. His recommendation, David, and I haven't spoken to Winnie face-to-face yet, although I did reach out to her. His recommendation was to reach out to the tribal council as a whole to talk about having a shared agenda and a shared meeting. And there was some nuances to that discussion that I can share with you later when we get together and figure it out.
I thought we drafted a letter. Did you, did that not go out to the chair about asking to be an item on their agenda?
Yeah, that, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, I completely, old man moment. I completely forgot about that letter. Yeah, my apologies. We did, we did, we did submit a letter to, to get time to discuss this with the tribal council. But there has been no formal or official discussions. Let me caveat it that way.
And so there was no response yet from that?
There hasn't been a response, as far as I know.
Not that I'm aware of.
So I'm kind of at a loss for what we want to adopt as a protocol. I mean, Roxanne is still in her position, but Trish was laid off in the last round of layoffs. So they don't have that communications, you know, person representing the chairman, which was, you know, she was kind of our main point of contact when we were setting up those meetings with the tribal council. So who should we be following up with?
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to figure that out, honestly. I mean, I'll give it another week or so before we, before I start reaching out to other people. I mean, again, I can reach out to the individual tribal council members that I have, that I know personally and see if there's been any action. I don't know what their cadence is for meetings. You know, I don't know their interior rules about how they can get an agenda item on there. You know, for all I know, they can't, they're not having a meeting where that would happen for two months. Maybe they don't think it's important. But if you don't mind, I'll reach out. And again, I'll talk to you offline if, if we want to have the chair and the tribal liaison as the responsibility for this so we can discuss it.
That's great. Thank you.
Any issues from the rest of the committee about having the chair and the tribal liaison working on the shared agenda for the annual joint meeting?
No, I think that's how it should go specifically because the chair is responsible for the agenda. So it should definitely be both.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's great. I think that's great.
Makes sense to me.
Thanks, Don. George, any issues with that?
No, sounds good to me. Makes all the world, actually.
So 2B is evaluate the effectiveness of the MPS outreach expenditures. I don't want to put this on the working group as well, although we could. But the outreach working group could also take this and kind of present a narrative to the committee for outreach expenditures and kind of a plan to move forward. I think that's well within their purview. And if necessary, we can also have that recommendation go to the working group for further detail, if that's all right.
I think I agree with that specifically because once the survey is all set, as far as I know, the outreach group doesn't have anything on our plates right now other than the normal day-to-day stuff. So it's probably a good idea.
All right, thanks, Chris.
I think that's a natural extension of the outreach group.
Thanks, Don. Nicole?
Yep, that sounds good.
I agree.
George? Awesome. Thanks, George. All right, so that's easy. The last one is develop a plan for school committee town hall-style forum. I would say that this could also be on the chair, but I don't, I don't know that that should be something that could be done in a vacuum. Is there a working group or a committee that thinks that they fit better into that style of thing? It's kind of out of the box and something fun that we can, we can figure out. We can also say it's all and we can have that as a discussion point on a couple of agendas.
You could potentially have to put a hold on that as well.
Well, yeah, of course. I mean, it's with the things that are going on right now. But I would definitely like to at least, at least put responsibility so we can start talking about it.
Why don't we, well, I was just thinking, to me, it feels sort of outreachy engagement. And if the outreach working group is going to be meeting on a couple of other things, we could at least start to, I mean, this is something that we want to do in the next school year, right? So it's kind of just starting to lay the groundwork, right?
Yeah.
So these are, yeah, developing the plan is what we need to do this, yeah.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, so I guess I'd say outreach to start. And then it seems like it's really something that the whole committee has to, and that might be a good agenda item for the tribal, the June meeting.
Yeah, fair enough. That's a good, good example. All right, so what I have, and the superintendent can back me up, I have 1A is the financial working group. 1B is all. 1C is Don and Nicole. 1D is the chair. 2A is the chair and the tribal liaison. And then 2B and 2C are the outreach working group.
And so do you want, except for 1C, you want everything else to just be positioned or working group? Like, you don't want me to name you?
No, please do working group and just, we don't have to update it again if somebody moves. In May, we're going to reorganize. And if we have people moving around in working groups, I don't want to change it again, so.
Okay.
Cool. Anything else on the school committee goal assignments before we move on to new business? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is new business. And the first thing is a student opportunity act DESI report. I'm gonna, I think I have that to share. Do I not?
Yes, that was part of that last email to everybody.
I will share that as well. A little bit smaller so you can see. Oh, went the wrong way. Do I turn it over to you, superintendent?
Sure. So we have had a lot of discussions about this, the timeline for this report from the commissioner as well as with all the other superintendents. We only have about, well, $47,000 increase and change to account for. So we are eligible to do the short form. I believe they're going to be pushing at least to a May 1st deadline, but they have to get approval from the legislature because it was part of the law. And so what you have in front of you is our draft. And where we would allocate this money, reminder though, this money is in chapter 70 that goes to the town. So it's just, what are we going to be able to do with what we've already projected for next year's budget? And we feel that this is doable because of some retirements. So you'll see that basically we're focusing on the, on two subgroups, which is our special education population and our economically disadvantaged. And we're honing in on basically the middle high school zone, the area. And the measurements will be based off of our 10th graders. And the only other piece is, you know, in this process, they do want you to have stakeholder input. So if in fact the deadline is changed, I would anticipate maybe in April that we would bring this back before the school committee. So, well, that's assuming we're actually in a, in a room together to invite public comment. But if there is the opportunity between now and, say, May 1st, we've put different groups that we're planning to share it with. As of this moment, it has not been shared with them in terms of the, let's commitment in the certification section. But basically, so you're being introduced to the general idea of how we would respond to this required report and what we would like to do with the extra funds.
So bottom line, the extra funds would go to an extra adjustment counselor at the Mashpee Middle High School to meet all of your commitments focusing on the student subgroups, correct?
Correct.
How does that address the individual instructional deficiencies?
It's looking at barriers that could be interfering with a student's academic success.
And once those barriers are identified, then what?
So when you look at our, that population that we're targeting this plan for, it's, there are social, emotional and challenging situations that kids are dealing with that are interfering with their ability to fully engage with the learning that's taking place. Also, by having an additional adjustment counselor, that it would potentially free up some of our guidance counselor time that could be zeroed in a little bit for students that are just having an academic challenge and don't have any underlying social, emotional issues.
I had a question before I do so. Nicole, George, Chris, anyone have any input?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I guess the last question I would have is, so we're not asking for any additional academic resources at this point?
No. Although it's very interrelated.
I don't have anything.
Would it not make sense to ask for that?
I don't really have anything.
Thanks, George.
Patty, I'm sorry. Would it not make sense to ask for additional academic resources as part of this? Or is that out of the plan?
Well, with the, we're only, we have to respond to spending the $47,000. I think this is a high need that will impact quite a few students in that area. We still have within our own operating budget the ability to assess our resources. And if we need to reallocate because there's more of an academic demand, then we will.
Patty, Ms. DeBoer, can I speak to that too?
Yes.
May I? It's hope. Don, also, $47,000 is not going to move the needle with academic materials or input. But $47,000 is going to move the needle for our social, emotional needs, which are getting in the way of kids accessing the academics. So I think it was twofold. The small amount of money, we're not going to get a better bang for our buck than for what the superintendent is proposing.
I, I don't disagree.
All right, I'm going back on mute.
But, but this is Nicole, just to clarify though, so, you know, we're required to put this plan, submit this to DESI for this $47,000. But this does not represent an increase over what we've gotten any year or last year, for example. I mean, this isn't new money. We just now have to say what we're doing with it, right?
Right. It's, it's an increase over last year's chapter 70, but the chapter 70 goes to the town. So our budget for, you know, we're not going to go back to the town and say, hey, we want another $47,000.
But I don't think it actually is an increase over what we got last year. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get about $30 a student every year.
No, but in total, our FY '20, chapter 70 money is $4,640,166. And our FY '21, chapter 70 is $4,687,716. So that's what we are addressing.
And to be clear, if we did not get an increase in chapter 70 money, we wouldn't have to do this SOA form in the first place?
Probably. You know, most of us, only a couple of the districts on the Cape have a substantial amount of money. But in, given their budgets, it's not really a substantial amount of money. There's a general feeling or wondering, I should say, as to how DESI is going to examine these plans. So just a reminder too, these plans, whether it goes in April 1st, which I'm pretty sure it's not, but they are then going to provide us with feedback. So it's an online template. I started to fill it out, but then I didn't complete it. And so once we submit it, then they'll come back and say, hey, we think you should do this. We don't like this. Or they'll give us suggestions. Or they'll say they love it. Who knows? And I don't know when that will happen.
Okay, I apologize for the questions. I was misinformed then. I thought that I had looked at those numbers before. Okay. I apologize for the questions. I was misinformed then. I thought that I had looked at those numbers before and it didn't represent an increase. So forgive me.
Thanks, Donna and Nicole. Chris or George? Chris, anything?
No, I'm good.
George?
No, thank you.
So I had a quick questions. Can you verify the stakeholders, stakeholder certification? I know you mentioned it and did you say that we had not engaged the stakeholders yet? I know we've done the public school committee meeting, but did we do the CPAC meeting as well?
No, no. Which they said when this was first, or maybe it was the webinar I watched, based on the timing and at that point it was the April 1st and they realized when school committee meetings are meeting as well. But what you write in there is what you intend and make sure that you follow through to do, but the timing of it could be off. So it's, it's definitely going to get done. I don't know whether you're, I don't know if we had, we did have it as a vote. I suppose if you vote and they change the deadline, we'll have more time to have confirmed for you that we have gone to these groups, but we fully intend to take the plan to the group.
Well, the unfortunate thing is, you know, we've, we've been put into a funky situation now. I, I doesn't, doesn't surprise me that we haven't been able to engage everybody with what, what's been going on, but we will not have an opportunity to vote on this again before the deadline as it is now. So
Correct.
Unless there's, unless there's more questions, we can entertain a motion to approve or not approve or whatever motion you'd like. So we can move forward. But if we table this, we will miss the deadline unless we re, reconvene to do just this.
Yeah, I would imagine within a week or so, we have weekly Commissioner Riley phone calls. And I know that he was going back. This is one of his to do items to see about changing the date through the legislature. So I would imagine we would have an answer relatively soon. I mean, you could always choose to do an emergency meeting if in fact they don't change the date. If you don't want to vote on it tonight. Other than the, the stakeholder groups that are going to, that we will vet it through, I'm not anticipating, I wouldn't anticipate any changes in what we're proposing based on the interactions with those groups. It's a very small amount of money.
I know. And that's also, you know, that's also the conundrum we follow in there. There can't be any changes. Or we'd have to turn around and then we would absolutely have to have an emergency meeting to get it approved again. So it could be submitted on time. So it's just, you know, if it's really kind of six of one and a half a dozen of the other about which way we want to move forward. And that's why I wanted to defer a bit to the group. And if anybody wants to, I will entertain a motion and we can move forward with normal protocol. Whatever that motion may be.
Well, I think we should, you know, move forward with things that we can, can tick off. I think this is, this is obviously not the, the, we have a whole lot of other stuff that we're working on, both in planning for success and, and, you know, all the work that Hope is doing and, I mean, and, and Dr. Curly. So I feel like this is just this one component and to meet the state requirements. So I, I think we should approve it and move on. And, you know, let that engagement happen as part of that larger district wide strategy to address these gaps. So I move to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Nicole. Any second?
I'll second.
Second by George to approve the Mashpee Public Schools draft. Do you mind having an edit on here that the, our expectation to understanding is that it'll be certified by the stakeholders? I'm sorry, it'll be in the stakeholders as listed will be engaged?
Yes. And I think since I'm the one submitting, I believe the, like the checking, the I is me. And then I also said that I certified that you've approved it.
Yeah, perfect. I just mean, we're approving it as written.
Yeah.
We're approving it as written. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you are, it's, it's my, it's me on the hook for making sure our stakeholders are engaged. That's a check off for me. And then I'm checking off that you have approved it as well. And I give the data the vote.
Yeah, I concur. I just, we're approving that paragraph that you wrote that you've certified and the following groups are going to be engaged. And my comment was that we're going to prove this with the expectation that that's the way that it's actually going to go down. If not, we need to revoke.
Yep.
Okay.
We can do that.
Any problem with that edit to your motion, Nicole?
No.
Okay. So I got a motion to approve and I got a second. Do I have any further discussion on the school opportunity plan? SOA plan? All right. Hearing done. Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
George?
Yep.
And I vote yes, unanimous, approve. Thank you very much. Pardon me. So the next item on the agenda is the FY 21 proposed school committee meeting schedule. Do we, do we have that in the packet?
I'm not seeing that in the packet.
Yeah, we don't have that in the packet. So, so we're going to have to table that.
Which that one?
I get a motion to table the FY 21 proposed school committee meeting schedule.
So moved.
And a motion by George, a second to move this to the next, next meeting, regular business meeting.
Okay.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I also vote yes, unanimous. We will table the FY 21 proposed school committee meeting schedule to the next regularly, the next regular business meeting. My next item is an update on planning for success. Superintendent, take it away.
So the larger stakeholder group met on March 10th. And it was the work of that group that has landed us in what appears to be four categories of, or pockets of, I would say broad goal areas. So that could potentially end up in our strategic plan. So one of the goal areas is the portrait of a graduate. Recognizing that it was just basically in its infancy and introduction this year and that it's not really considered a living document yet. It's just our framework. So that would be a goal area. A second goal area is equity and inclusion. Encouraging more student voice and student choice and student participation. I think one of the students shared that, that it's somewhat stifled by labels. And, you know, there are many things that would fall under the equity and inclusion goal umbrella. The, another one is curriculum and instruction. And then the last one we were calling it's a connect, a connected community. And that's about public relations and community connections and how we, we share information and our people feeling overloaded or are we hitting our targets? So those were currently where we're landing in terms of the broad goal areas. And we will have to realign our meeting schedule. The next meeting was supposed to be on March 26th. And that was again with our larger stakeholder group and that was going to do some root cause analysis. And then we also had a leadership retreat meeting that's scheduled for April 7th, which if the schedule stays as it is today, that would be our first day back with our students. So that will not be a good date for that. So we still think that we will be presenting a finished product to the school committee. Probably more like June than May, but we don't know. So far, I think it's been an excellent process and I know Dawn and Nicole were involved as well as Hope. But we're making some good progress and moving, I think, in a very good direction. Any other thoughts? Anyone?
I think it's been a very insightful and collaborative process and I commend everyone who's been participating in the process.
Yeah. Thanks, Donna and Nicole for leading that charge for the committee.
And just to highlight for those in the audience is that we do have two high school students who are participating and then we have recently added a sixth grader to our larger stakeholder group and their, their voice and their thoughts are so valuable.
Yeah. And, and just for everyone's awareness too, we also have a member of the FinCom and a member of the Board of Selectmen that's participating. So it does, in addition to the parents and the administrators, it just, it feels like a really comprehensive cross section of the community. And it was kind of interesting at the last meeting because we had to break out and sort of come up with some themes. And, you know, all these different breakout groups ended up with the same themes, which was pretty telling. So I think it's going to have real value for the district and be a really great, you know, guiding document for the future of Mashpee. So thanks, Patty, for all your efforts.
And we also have a representative from the tribe, which is awesome.
Yeah, Roxanne, who's been great.
Yep.
All right. Next I'll share the screen too, and we can do the upcoming dates. There they are. Anything to add about that, Patty?
No, it's just hopeful that we're able to get everything back on track. Hoping that the closure is not extended.
Yes, we can hope.
Yes.
Although as we've seen, things continue to change hour by hour, day by day. So.
Yeah, we have to have hope.
Absolutely. The next thing on the agenda is the graduation, June 6th at 10:00 AM. And I, I beg Patty to add this to the agenda and we put it on the master agenda calendar as well, so that we can make sure we don't forget to order robes.
And normally that comes out in an email from Sherry Vanitsky. And so when we see that, we'll make sure that all of you are aware and you can feedback. I think she usually does it as a Google form. We'll make sure your input is on there as well. Otherwise we'll go through Gail, but we should be able to have you do it norm with, through Sherry.
Nicole, you have your doctorate by then? No.
No, no, no.
That's good. Hoping I could see you in that great hat.
Oh, thank you. The little smooshy ones.
Beret kind of thing.
Yeah, exactly. A graduation book. I know there's been some discussion behind the scenes about updating our graduation book. And I think we put that on here just to generate some discussion about it. We currently do the, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say in that email that I sent shortly before this meeting about with some of the documents, I did put the two links in that would allow you to look at the books. I actually have them physically here, but that's not going to help you at all. So instead of the Dr. Seuss, oh, the places you'll go, there's two options. What do you do with an idea, which is a really nice story. It's a picture book. Sends a great message, great artwork in it. And then the other one was the hard copy version, better version of the 212, the extra degree has a lot of good motivational messages in it as well. So you can look at those online, but you can also at some point look at the hard copies. But if we're going with a change, we just need to allow time to order them. So it would be definitely something like we'd want to settle maybe by the next meeting. Maybe at the April meeting, we could, if it's, we could have a, have some thoughts on that. We looked at several others as well, but kind of have it down to those two.
I, I haven't gotten the chance to look at the link before the meeting, so I'll take a look at the, the 212 one. But definitely that one feels, I mean, the, oh, the places you'll go has always had this sort of nostalgic charm. I mean, we're handing a bunch of, you know, graduates, 18 year olds, a children's book. And it's the, the, the second book or the first one you mentioned, I forget, I'm not, I have to keep toggling back and forth here. What's it called again?
What do you do with an idea?
Yeah. What do you do with an idea? That was just a book that was circulated at the mask president, board president's retreat. So that's something that some districts are going to instead of all the places you'll go. But that's also like that, a kid's book, sort of that same, you know, good message, but and so it strikes me as I'm looking at the, the link you shared for the extra degree, that that's actually like a, a book made for, you know, the people we're handing the book to. You know what I mean? It's kind of, it, it, it's really more at a level and you know, that's appropriate to teenagers. It's not a children's book.
Yeah, it has some great shared sort of motivational stories and they're quick reads. I, I could see our students getting a lot out of it. Particularly that, that particular version is a nice version, has nice pictures in it and good.
Yeah, it looks a lot different.
Oh, yes, it does. Yeah, it's definitely a different, we're definitely setting a different tone when you hand one book out as opposed to the other. That's for sure.
I think it's in effect with parents. You know, some parents talk, yeah, I got a lot of the, you know, they, they have them on their shelf. The, oh, the places you'll go and, you know, I don't know. I don't think any of the kids actually ever open it and read it. It's just, it's like getting a second diploma. It's a nice square thing that you hand them and.
Yeah, it seems like it's something that the parents like. Like I said, it's that charm factor. Very symbolic, but I, I like that you've come up with an alternative that's actually could be read by these students and, you know, maybe appreciated. So maybe not at graduation. But sometime later in their life.
Oh, there's, it's, it's set up in such a way though, that you can have snippets, snippets of inspiring words and then go back and pick up another snippet. Set up nicely.
So when's the decision point on that?
Pardon me?
When, when's the decision point on that?
I would like to see it at the April meeting. May would be cutting it too close in terms of ordering. And then making sure we put, you know, the label in the back and all of that. Sometimes they come quick, but I, it could be tight. So if we could shoot for an April 8th decision. And if we're meeting in person on the 8th, which I'm not sure if we will. Like I said, we have copies of them in our office. If you at some point dare to come individually and stay away from everyone else, you could pick them up.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Again, I just put on there to incite discussion and get some background so we can make an informed decision on the 8th. So appreciate that. Any, any other comments about the graduation book or the two recommendations?
Just a quick question. Does it happen in the office every day?
No.
No, okay.
If you, if you think, yeah, I would, I would like send me a text or. Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris or Don, any following thoughts about the graduation book before we move on?
Nope. Any thoughts I have on the book would, any thoughts I have on the book would be purely personal. So I'm, I'm abstaining from any comments.
Understood. Don?
Yeah, I'll take a look at the two alternatives that are proposed. I'm not familiar with either one.
All right. Thanks folks. So the, the next item on the agenda is, we, I made a very general stand genetic statements, COVID-19. Just to get any updates from the superintendent. Also, did you want to share out the MOA during this item as well, Superintendent DeBoer?
Yes. So the, there's a draft MOA that is currently being reviewed by the association in terms of addressing some common understandings during the closure period. in terms of addressing some common understandings during the closure period. Other districts are working up their version as well. They all sort of stem from an initial MOA proposed by the state-level MTA, and then districts are individualizing it. So I'm not sure it will land exactly like this, but this has been reviewed by our attorney and approved. So that's one piece. Just to reinforce, you know, we made the decision last Friday to close for a two-week period. And then the decision was made at a state level to go basically three weeks and a day. So we're now scheduled to reopen on Tuesday, April 7th. We have had regular meetings with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. We had one Friday, then Monday, and then I believe every Friday, there'll be another one. And like I said, some of the things he's looking into has to do currently with the MCAS schedule. MCAS, under the federal ESSA, is our accountability measure. And so there would need to be something on the federal level that either holds districts harmless for this school year. Most of the superintendents are promoting or pushing for no testing this year, because by the time we come back, to then take what I consider very valuable in-class learning time, and set aside, you know, six days in some cases for testing, is not student-centered, but in the end, we don't get to make that choice. And then, like I said, he's also working with the legislature on changing the SOA report deadline. Generally, all superintendents, at least on the Cape, I think generally, we are all paying all of our employees, so in Mashpee, whether you're an hourly employee or salaried, so teachers, paraprofessionals, we're paying our recess monitors, we're paying our kitchen help. We are paying our bus drivers through the collaborative. However, this week, for everyone, has been classified, as you noticed in the MOA, as a snow, as snow days, because the commissioner did say to everyone that no school district will go beyond 185 days. The calendar we build always has the 180 plus five snow days. So that is our last school day based on that calendar. So for Mashpee, it will be June 24th. And, lost my train of thought just then. Oh, so this week is considered snow day. So talking to Paul Hilton, the bus drivers are not paid for this week, because they will be working the five additional days at the end of June. But everyone else, right now, is paid for. And because we're viewing these five days as snow days, there is less emphasis on some of the expectations we might have for teachers. One of the things coming up for our elementary-level teachers is report cards. The term would have closed this past Monday, so we're assuming it closed last Friday. And so starting next week, although many teachers have most of this done, but next week is the window for teachers at the elementary level to engage in all report card-related tasks. And then report cards will be mailed home, or set up electronically, I'm not sure yet, coming down the road. If we go, we did spend, the administrative team worked on Monday, you know, six feet apart from everybody, to develop some of our plans. We came up with what I think is an excellent plan for addressing families who need food. And I know on Tuesday was one of the days we had available, some of the, so we have our food being prepared by our school cafeteria. Gus and a few of his workers are preparing lunches and breakfast for the next day. That will be available five days a week. For this week, it started on Wednesday. But on Tuesday, we did reach out to all of the families who are currently supported through the Cape Kids Meal Program, and that's a program where food is sent home every weekend for food insecure families and students. And so what we did at Quashnet was packaged three weeks' worth of food out of the Cape Kids Meal Program, and all of the resources that we had at the back of the Quashnet School. So those were packaged up in larger bundles than usual. And then what we also did was, we looked at all of the food available through Gus's program, through the Food Services Director Program, and we created large bags of groceries that included fresh produce that he had ordered anyway, as if this was going to be a regular school week. And so families came on Tuesday, and we had packaged 48 Cape Kids, you know, the triple amount, and 30 of those packages were distributed on Tuesday. And of 27 supplemental food bags that were prepared, which had dry goods as well as perishables, 20 of those were distributed. And then today was the first day for the drive-up meal delivery. And there were a few situations where families came in, and the principals were there as well. And some of those extra supplemental bags were also given to certain families today as well. And I do want to give a shout-out to our administrative team, and Dr. Hanscom and Dr. Curly, our principals, and Susie Brooks and Sean Maroney, who really worked very hard and very well together on Monday to develop all these plans and put the systems in place to make it work. And then Susie and, you know, different people have continued to work on this. So we arranged for our food delivery plan, and parents just pull up, and they don't get out of their car, and a staff member comes out and delivers them their items. The other piece that we needed to get organized on Monday were Chromebooks. And so we also sent out a Google form for that, I wrote it down somewhere. So we've had 85 students request loaner Chromebooks, and it was targeted for students in grades one through six. So they filled out the form, which included them signing off on the user agreement. And then yesterday was spent getting all of those organized. We bagged them all up, they all had the names on them. And there's three different times, I think it was three different times today, and three different time periods tomorrow, for those to be picked up, and those are also brought out to the family cars. We've had a couple of, there was a high school kid who, you know, wrote to me about his Chromebook being broken, and so he is picking up a Chromebook as well from the school. And these will be expected to be returned on the day that we come back. And we have, all of them were sanitized prior to being distributed, and they'll be sanitized when they come back in to us. And then that last, or an important part of what we did on Monday as well, was we created the MPS At Home Learning Site, it's a Google site. It allows us to continue to add to it, but it is full of resources, and it is a guide for families of some great online learning opportunities. So there's a page for middle, high school, a page for Quashnet, a page for Coombs, a special education page, and a wellness page. I did speak to Ruth Provost this evening, and she, they are developing some type of an online, an hourly, some type of an hourly live program, and some other resources. So I told her, when she had that done, we will create a page that links right to their page as well on that At Home Learning Site. The superintendents on the Cape, we met today virtually, we've shared a lot of resources, so our site will continue to be enhanced. In addition to what's on there, I know from the feedback that the principals have received from their teachers, that many teachers have had frequent connections already with their students. Obviously, seven through 12 use Google Classroom, and most of three through six also uses Google Classroom. And at the preschool, I know there's been interactions, both face-to-face, virtually, with students and teachers. So our teachers are really doing an amazing job of handling not only the stress of the situation, and what they might be dealing with at their own homes, but also recognizing how they can support our families. And for the food delivery, this week, it's being handled by the administrative team. But starting next week, there are, each day of distribution is being handled by a different school, and volunteers have signed up to come in and do that. And it just involves sort of helping to package them up, and then walking them out to the cars for the families. So.
Pardon me, yes. I'm so sorry, only because I haven't talked to you about this yet, but we are, the admin team is gonna talk to you about actually limiting that to just the admins doing the giving out next week, for some containment reasons. So right now, we have volunteers who have agreed to come in, but we may actually change that plan. We were gonna talk to you about it tomorrow, just to make sure that our bubbles stay the way that they are right now, in terms of who we're interacting with, and not widening that circle. So I'm sorry, so sorry for interrupting, but I didn't want to hear information that may ultimately change, so, all right, back on mute.
I prefer that plan anyway. But I do appreciate the willingness of our staff to go above and beyond. And so I guess that's, I might have missed a few things, so it's, we will work on the MOA. There'll be a call on Friday, and I will make sure I update school committee after that call with the commissioner. I'm gonna try to do minimally updates each week with our families.